Good evening, Act. Welcome, everybody. This is our regularly scheduled City Council meeting for October 18, 2022. I'll call the meeting to order. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unadorned, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we'll have a roll call by Deputy City Clerk Priscilla Ortega.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glasswell.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Eddie Huliveri.
Here.
And all council members are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda, including additions or deletions?
There are not.
Thank you. Next item is our Youth City Council applicant interview, and I'd like to call up Caitlin So we had approved our City Council, Youth City Council slate at our last meeting, but we're gonna, that's right there. But we didn't have a chance to interview Caitlin because she was not feeling well at that time, so we're gonna have that opportunity now. So Caitlin, tell me, what do you expect to get out of being on Youth City Council?
I want to learn how to solve problems without causing arguments and to solve them peacefully and efficiently, and to hopefully meet new people and make new friends.
Very good. We appreciate you applying to be on the Youth City Council, and we'd like to wish you success on your term with the Youth City Council. Thank you. Next item is our Call for Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. The Call for Public Comment Agenda Item is a time when concerned citizens of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Item number seven, the Approval of Minutes. City Council Consideration of the Minutes of the October 3, 2022 Special City Council Meeting and the October 4, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. And this is Deputy City Clerk Priscilla Ortega. Do we have any changes to the minutes or anything?
We do not have any changes.
Perfect, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion as read.
Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Huliveri.
Yes.
And we have a unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, the Historic Preservation Commission Appointment. City Council Consideration of the Appointment of Historic Preservation Commission Alternate, Jeremy Omvig, as a regular member of the City of Montrose Historic Preservation Commission for a term that expires on October 16, 2025. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Planning Commission Alternate Jeremy Omvig as a regular member of the City of Montrose Historic Preservation Commission for a term that expires on October 16, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Huliveri.
Yes.
And we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
You know, the motion on that is different from what we considered. He is currently, I just want to clarify that he's not currently on the Planning Commission. That's what it says, but he's currently an alternate on the Historic Preservation Commission.
I had made that change in my.
Yeah, there's a typo here, and I read the typo.
There is a typo in the meaning.
And so.
But your motion was reflected, Doug.
I read what was here, and that's wrong.
I didn't even notice.
But I think what we're appointing him to is correct.
Clarification, that we were appointing Jeremy Omvig as a Historic Preservation Commission Regular Member. Do we need to revote on that? With a clarified motion?
At this point, no. I think you've done a good job of explaining what it is that you intended, and we did it contemporaneously. If any of you are uncomfortable with that, of course, you can revote, but I think it's needless formality at this point.
I think since it was unanimous. It's simply a script errors error.
Correct.
Moving on to item number nine, City Council Consideration of Transfer of the Retail Liquor Store License at 113 West Main Street from Phil's Enterprise LLC Doing Business as West Main Liquors to Quick Shop LLC Doing Business as West Main Liquors for Consumption Off of the License Premise. And this is Assistant Attorney Chris Dowsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. As stated before, City Council is an application to transfer a retail liquor store license from Phil's Enterprises LLC Doing Business as West Main Liquors to Quick Shop LLC Doing Business as West Main Liquors. This is going to be located at 113 West Main Street. This is a public inquiry for the transfer of the retail liquor store license. The permit is in order, the fees have been paid. From City Staff's review of the application, we have seen nothing that would prevent City Council from transferring this license, notwithstanding this inquiry. Council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer for up to 30 days. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to introduce themselves to Council and announce their home address for the record.
Hello. So thank you, everyone here, for having me here. So my name is Phangling Kusum. And first, I would like to talk about my education.
If you could, what is your address for the record?
116 West Main, Main Street, on the Main Street.
Your home address.
1609 Hickory Drive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, do you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point, or do you wish that I ask some of the preliminary questions?
Please ask the preliminary questions.
Thank you. So could you please tell us about West Main Liquor?
Okay. So I really like the business, the liquor store business. And I will like to improve on the business as well, seeing it could change more.
Perfect. Thank you. So the City of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws of Colorado. Would you please describe how familiar you are with these laws?
Can you please say it again?
Yes, absolutely. So Montrose, the City of Montrose, we're very serious about enforcing the liquor laws of Colorado. Are you familiar with the liquor laws of Colorado?
Yes, I am very familiar. I have attended training class twice, and then I'll just make sure all my employee come to the training class as well, and then I will just make sure them not selling to the under-eight people, and then not to the intoxicated people.
Perfect. Could you explain how you plan on keeping your employees from selling to minors?
So I will make sure they will ID people who are under 50 or 52 years old.
Great, thank you. So you're familiar with the liquor law education class? You said you've attended it twice?
Yes.
Do you understand that it's the city's intention that all licensees of the city and their employees attend that training?
Yes.
Do you know if the employees have already attended this training?
Yes.
They all have?
All my employee have attended.
Perfect. Would you be willing to commit to Council that if the license is transferred, that you, as the licensee, all of your employees, when they start, within 30 days of their training, or 30 days of their hire, they will go to one of these classes?
Can you please?
So when you get a new employee, would you commit to Council that you will send your new employees to that training?
Yes, I will. If they have a new class, I will send them.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, do you have any further questions?
Any further questions from Council? Any questions from our Youth Council? Thank you. We'll accept public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the transfer of the retail liquor store at 113 West Main Street from Phil's Enterprises LLC Doing Business West Main Liquors to Quick Shop LLC Doing Business as West Main Liquors for Consumption Off of the License Premise.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Huliveri.
Yes.
And we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Moving on to item number 10, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2597 on Second Reading, an Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, Repealing Subsection 6-1-28 per an L from the Official Code of the City of Montrose, Colorado, to Remove a Reference to an Unused Account. And this will be handled by City Attorney Ben Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. This item removes the graffiti fund provision from our municipal code. It was considered at the last council meeting on first reading, and it passed unanimously. There have been no changes since first reading. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and field those now.
Are there any questions from Council? From our Youth Council?
What is it? Sorry, I know that, I saw the number, but what is it for?
Okay. This was cleanup provision for our municipal code. We found that we weren't using this part of the code as it was designed and intended to be used, and the concern was from the municipal judge that it might cause confusion because of that. Several years ago, in 2006, a larger ordinance was passed by the Council at that time to address the problem of graffiti. The ordinance was designed, when it was passed, to include a special fund that was set up through the ordinance to capture monies from people who had criminal cases for making graffiti around town. And that fund's money then would be used, once there was enough of it, to remediate the graffiti, like by repainting or erasing it somehow. Okay, so while there's been plenty of graffiti around town, there haven't been that many municipal court cases that involved collection of money to be put into the fund to then use to remediate it. Instead, we're using funds from our general fund account to do just that, but they're not coming out of this account. And so for that reason, we thought that eliminating the fund would also eliminate confusion, since it wasn't being used, as I've tried to describe it was intended.
Gotcha. Thank you so much for explaining it to me.
You're welcome.
Very good. We will accept public comment. Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2597 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Huliveri.
Yes.
And we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, our Stormwater Utility Fee Study Contract Award. City Council Consideration of the Award of a Contract with Carrillo Engineers Incorporated in the Amount of $54,404 for the Completion of a Stormwater Utility Fee Study. And this is Street Division Superintendent Nick Pretty.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for that introduction. I'm here on behalf of Public Works Department, asking for Council's consideration on awarding a contract to Carrillo Engineering in the amount of $54,404. Our most recent stormwater master plan was developed nearly 13 years ago, in 2009. At that time, at the time it was developed, the study outlined many major defects, as well as a few minor issues that our stormwater system had. Since then, many of the minor issues have been repaired under the general fund. There have been persistent issues over the last 13 years that have, that continue to require regular maintenance and have been delegated to corresponding departments. But the study has also shed light on many of the major defects our system has, the tremendous scale of repairs needed, and the funding that is required for such repairs. The original study determined many of our stormwater systems were already undersized. Since then, Montrose has grown significantly. With all the new development, new drainage systems have been introduced, some being passionate to our older systems. These new additions have only worsened our already undersized system. Public Works Management has been strategizing a way to fund these major repairs in an economically attuned sensitive manner to keep up with city's continuous growth and ever-growing stormwater regulations that are imposed on us by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. To begin creating action steps towards tackling these problems and maintaining our system long-term, Public Works has asked for bids on a comprehensive study and implementation report on different types of stormwater fees. This report would come from a qualified company with a demonstrated history of working with other municipalities and developing a stormwater utility fee. At the conclusion of the study, the company will be able to provide this counsel and Public Works on how a fee structure has worked for other municipalities, and most importantly, provide a variety of options for the type and implementation of such a fee system. After the bid posting process, Public Works has received a total of three bids. After careful consideration, our selection committee unanimously agreed that Carrillo had the most thorough proposal, and they also happened to be the least expensive option. We were pleasantly surprised to have a really good internal reference from David Breeze. They are currently working for our wastewater treatment plant, so they kind of have a leg up there. They already know the ins and outs of that end of our utility. So, yeah, upon your consideration and approval, work will begin this year and be finished in the first quarter of next. The deliverables from the study will include the fee structure for all contributors to our stormwater system, the estimated revenues and how they compare to the repair and maintenance expenditures, and a much-needed new stormwater master plan.
Very good. Any questions from Council? Seeing none, we'll accept public comment. Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that Council, yeah, let me turn the page. I'll move that Council award a contract to Carrillo Engineers, Inc., in the amount of $54,404 for the completion of a stormwater utility fee study as presented.
I'll second that. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Huliveri.
Yes.
And we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now moving on to our next item, item 12, Contract Award for Safeguarding of a Historic Power Plant. City Council Consideration of the Award of a Contract with Orion Environmental Incorporated and the Authorization of $74,261.25 for the Safeguarding of the Former Bullock Power Plant at 30 West South Fourth Street. And this was handled by Facilities Manager Mark Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As previously discussed during the October 3 work session, have a contract recommendation for your consideration this evening. Staff is recommending that Orion Incorporated be awarded the Facility Safeguarding Project at 30 West South Fourth Street, also known as the Bullock Power Station. The project scope of work includes boarding up and securing all doors, windows, and other exterior penetrations of this facility. That's the main power plant facility. The city received three bids for the Facility Safeguarding Project, and Orion Incorporated was our low bidder. The Orion contract amount is $64,575, along with an owner's contingency of 15%. The project total budget would be $74,261.25. This project is necessary to protect the structure from the elements, to prevent unauthorized entry into the structure, and to prevent the further spread of asbestos and other substances outside of the structure. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So to be clear, one of the reasons we're wanting to secure this is to prevent unauthorized access, and because it does have environmental hazards, that securing the building has become very important.
That is correct.
Any other questions from Council? Seeing none, would accept public comment. And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the award of the contract with Orion Environment and the Authorization of $74,261.25 for safeguarding the former Bullock Power Plant at 30 West South Fourth Street as presented. Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Huliveri.
Yeah.
And we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And it would suggest that we could save a lot of money just getting a little guard dog that could roam around, but I think this is probably our better option. All right, moving on to item number 13, Base Camp Subdivision Final Plat. City Council Consideration of the Base Camp Subdivision Final Plat to Create Two New Multifamily Residential Lots, Associated Rights of Way and Easements, and Open Space and Outlots. This is Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. As stated, this is the final plat application for the Base Camp Subdivision. This has been presented to City Council multiple times, but to refresh your memory, the subdivision is located on the west side of the railroad, just to the west of North Grand Avenue. The project's area is about 3.6 acres in size. It is within the I-1 Light Industrial District, and is part of the Mura Project initiated in 2017. City Council approved the preliminary subdivision plat last year in March. There is also a planned development associated with this property, and that was approved both preliminary and final PD plan in March of last year as well. There haven't been any changes since the preliminary plat approval by City Council. As you know, for a final plat, all lots need to meet the minimum size in accordance with the approved PD plan, which this final plat does. All surrounding streets must be in place, inspected, and approved by the city engineer prior to final approval, and improvements will receive a preliminary letter of infrastructure completion. City utilities must be installed and available to serve all lots prior to final approval, and easements, as appropriate, are shown on the plat. As part of the PD plan that has been approved, multiple residential buildings are allowed on one parcel. Setback requirements have been adjusted, and a maximum building height of 45 feet is allowed. Modular buildings for the purposes of residential construction is also allowed on the PD plan. And here is the plat itself. This is the first page, consisting of plat notes and signature lines. I know that these are not easy to read on these screens, so for any interested members of the public who are watching online, these are also available in tonight's packet that has been published online. It's easier to see there. Here is page two. This shows the actual subdivision of the property itself, as well as curve and line data. You can also see that a portion of the property is being dedicated to the city for West North Sixth Street. This last page shows some of the current easements on the property that are no longer needed. These are obsolete and needs notes, AKA these unnecessary easements. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council?
Yeah, I just was curious. I'm still getting in used to how these are handled, but the map itself says preliminary. Wouldn't it have an indication of the plat? It says final or something like that, or are we just approving a preliminary plat that's already almost a year old or?
So this preliminary here, that's a notation that's used by this specific surveying and engineering firm in order to indicate that this is not the plat that has been printed out, this not to indicate that this is a preliminary plat. The preliminary plat itself was approved back in March of last year. So this is the final plat, they use preliminary to indicate that it hasn't been printed out.
So we're using a preliminary plat to finalize the, as a final plat, right? I guess maybe.
A preliminary printout of the plat rather than the final printout, but it's not a preliminary plat.
It is the final plat, it is just the preliminary version of the final plat.
It was a poor use of words.
Yeah. If they could take that off of the paper, it would be a lot better for us to look at.
It'll be removed on the.
It almost seems like we're approving a preliminary final plat again.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just a little confusing to myself.
Yeah, the annotation on there is kind of weird.
Is this associated with any kind of a planned unit development?
Yes, as mentioned, there was a planned development that was approved in March of last year as well.
Isn't it, or it used to be customary, from my experience on council previously, that the location of the buildings were actually put on a final plat, so that when we look at these things, we'll see, oh, okay, we know where the buildings are going and how they're being built, not necessarily how they're being built, but how they're located. Is that no longer?
Depending on the nature of the planned development, that may be appropriate, yes. However, this is not a, this is not the planned development document that you are approving tonight. The final plan development has already been approved. That was, again, that was last year. This is a final plat in which building locations are typically not shown on a final plat. This is a, shows the subdivision, as well as easements, and shows where the property lines are to be placed.
Okay, that must have changed, because I've done a couple of planned unit developments in the past, and it was required that I put the building locations so that they could check the setbacks and all that stuff. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Accept public comment, and seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Base Camp Subdivision Final Plat expressly conditioned upon city staff, ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that, excuse me, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of the staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Huliveri.
No.
Moving on to item number 14, Ordinance Number 2598 on First Reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2598 on First Reading, an Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, Designating the Knights of Pythias Building, 33 South Cascade Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose Historic Property pursuant to 4-15 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. This is also Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're all very excited about this application. Of course, I think you all know that the Knights of Pythias Building across the street has recently been purchased, and the new owners are proposing to do some renovations there. We're very excited that they've chosen to designate the building on the city's historic register. We do feel that this building is easily eligible. A building has to be at least 50 years old in order to be eligible, and this was built in 1909, so there's no issue there. We are also saying that this building is eligible due to Criteria A and C, association with important events, and distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. First, some background about the Knights of Pythias. This is a paternal organization and secret society that was founded by this man, Justice Henry Rathbone, on February 19, 1864, in Washington, DC. They are still around today as an organization. The Montrose chapter of the Knights of Pythias were established in January of 1887, when representatives of the Iron Mountain Lodge, Number 19, of Salida, came to formally start what was called the Cascade Lodge, Number 33. The first officers were W.A. Eckerly, L. Stewart, J.W. Eiler, F.N. Van Horn, J.C. Marsh, R. Getz, T.E. Finley, and J.N. Reynolds. It's a bit unclear where they were meeting at first, but they evidently started meeting in the upstairs. in the upstairs building at three-seventeen Main Street in eighteen ninety-nine. The stairs to the second floor of that building still has the Knights of Pythias signage above the door. By nineteen oh eight, the Montrose Knights had purchased property at the corner of South First Street and Cascade Avenue to construct a new building. There were a few different ideas tossed around for those plans. It was definitively decided that the building would be a fifty-foot by one hundred and fifteen-foot structure, and the first floor would be reserved to rent out as a store. There was discussion to make it a three-story building with an opera house on the second floor. That obviously never came to fruition. It was eventually decided on a two-story building with the first floor to be leased to S.B. Wonder of the Wonder Mercantile Company, and the second floor being reserved for the lodge. The contract was awarded to White and Oakey for twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ten cents. The architect for the building was John Antrubus, the same architect that designed the building we're in tonight, as well as many of the historical buildings in Montrose. The second floor's plan called for a fifty-foot by seventy-foot room with maple flooring, as well as parlors and club rooms. Excavation was begun in May of nineteen oh nine, and concrete was completed by the end of June. Bricklaying had begun in July, and the first floor was completed in September. Wonder Mercantile moved into that first floor in September, and the second floor was completed by October. The second floor was primarily used as the lodge for the Knights, but was also rented to the Montrose Elks Club, as well as an entertainment venue, and a place where they held stockholder meetings for the Montrose Fruit and Produce Association. In nineteen eleven, the Fourth Annual Convention of the Knights of Pythias of the Western Slope was held here, with more than four hundred people attending. By nineteen seventeen, the Baker Reinhardt Motor Company had moved into the first floor. And apparently, in nineteen nineteen, Montrose County and the City of Montrose considered purchasing the building and using it as joint county and city offices. That obviously didn't happen. According to some newspaper articles, I found the building was at one time owned by Colorado College in the early twenties. According to assessor's data, the building was sold to Montrose Marketing, Inc. in nineteen sixty-five. It's changed hands a few times until earlier this year, when it was purchased by Rathbone Prop Co., LLC. During that interim time, it was used for a variety of things, including huff furniture, a Safeway, mash appliances, and budget-lined furniture. And as some of you probably remember, there was a fire in two thousand and twelve that did damage to the building. Now, looking at the fire insurance maps, this is from nineteen twelve. This shows a two-story, thirty-foot-tall brick building with iron columns and a steel ceiling on the first floor. The roof was originally flat, and that has been altered. This is the nineteen nineteen map, and this is after the building had begun being used as a garage. This shows a capacity of thirty cars. Unfortunately, I found the number of historical photographs of the building to be a bit lacking. This picture is from nineteen thirteen. It shows some cattlemen of the Western Slope resenting Tony Monell, the then-postmaster of Montrose with a car. They're standing in front of the KP Building on the Cascade Avenue side. You can see that the northern entrance has retained its arched feature, but the storefront has been modified. I don't know the date of this picture. Obviously, it's from the Safeway days. You can see the windows as, the second-floor windows, as they would have originally looked. They have since been divided by brick in order to accommodate a third floor. Also note the fire stairs on the side of the building. Apparently, they were the first in Montrose. This is what the front looks like today. Some of the significant features include the central parapet with the name plaque inscribed with KP Building. Below that is the molded concrete cornice with brackets and the courses of concrete. Also note the pilasters that divide this side into the three bays. As mentioned, the brick dividing the upstairs window are a later modification. Also, the stucco on the first floor, on the first story is a modification. On the southeast side, many of these features wrap around. As mentioned, the fire stairs that were the first in Montrose are no longer there. The seven bays on the second store are very similar to the front. The windows and entrances on the first floor have also been modified. Note in the southeast corner on the right here, which features a historic entrance with arched concrete lintel. Finally, here is the southeast side. The windows here have been altered as well. The arched patterns of bricks show the former presence of four entrances on the side, likely from its garage days. You can also see that the roof features a parapet wall. And so, in conclusion, staff finds that the Knights of Pythias Building meets all eligibility and integrity criteria, and staff recommends approval for historical designation of this building. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I just wanted to make the comment. That was a very good presentation. I really enjoyed it. Being here when I was little, I remember the steps quite vividly, so the metal was coming down the sides.
Thank you.
It was nice to see that.
Thank you.
Did you stay off of them? Would you just hang on them, just kind of swink, kiss them?
Any questions from youth council?
No.
All right, we will hold a hearing. I'll open the hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance twenty-five ninety-eight on first reading as presented.
I'll sag at that. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasswell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Eddie Ullaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number fifteen, staff reports. And our finance director, Shanie Whittenburg, is going to give us our sales, use, and excise tax report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, this is the August sales, use, and excise tax collection report. Soon as I figure out how to... Advance it. I'm at a loss. Let's try that again. There we go. All right, so general fund sales and use taxes collected at three percent. Retail sales tax in August compared to August of two thousand and twenty-one is up almost twelve percent. Construction use tax up seventy-seven percent, with use and auto use tax up eight point four percent, and total collections up thirteen point three percent, with a twenty-nine percent positive budget variance. Year-to-date retail sales taxes up eleven point one percent, or one point five million dollars. Construction use tax up forty-five percent, or two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax up two point two percent, or twenty-two thousand dollars, with total collections up eleven point seven percent, or one point eight million dollars. Again, a positive budget variance of thirty point one percent, or almost four million dollars more has been collected than we budgeted. Public safety sales and use tax, we collect point five eight percent, and it goes directly into the Public Safety Fund. In August compared to August of two thousand and twenty-one, retail sales tax is up twelve point two percent. Construction use tax is up one hundred and fourteen point one percent. Use and auto use tax up eight point four percent, with total collections up fourteen point four percent, and a positive budget variance of thirty-one point six percent. Year-to-date, Public Safety, the Public Safety Fund has collected retail sales tax at eleven percent more than year-to-date, two thousand and twenty-one, or two hundred and ninety thousand, ninety thousand dollars. Construction use tax is up twenty-two point four percent, or thirty-two thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax up two point two percent, or four thousand dollars, with total collections up eleven percent, or three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Again, a positive budget variance here of almost twenty-seven percent, or seven hundred thousand dollars. Montrose Recreation District, back in two thousand and fourteen, we began collecting point three percent, and we send that directly to the REC district to construct, or it's already constructed, to pay some of their debt for the new REC Center. In twenty, August of two thousand and twenty-one, we've collected two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, or fourteen point four percent more than we did in August of two thousand and twenty-one. Year-to-date, we've collected one point seven million dollars, or ten point eight percent more than through August of two thousand and twenty-one, which equates to one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds point nine percent, restaurant excise tax adds point eight percent. In August compared to August of two thousand and twenty-one, hotel excise tax is up almost six percent. Restaurant tax is up almost five percent, with total collections, collections at four point nine percent, and a positive budget variance of almost twenty percent. Year-to-date collections for hotel excise tax is up fourteen point three percent, or thirteen thousand dollars. Restaurant excise tax is up almost seven percent, or twenty-six thousand dollars, with total collections up eight point five percent, or forty thousand dollars. Budget variance here is positive as well, at twenty-four point four percent, or just about one hundred thousand dollars more has been collected. Retail sales enhancement, this is a portion of the vendor's fee that was given up to promote sales in Montrose. In August, we collected almost fifty-four thousand dollars, or eleven percent more than we did in August of two thousand and twenty-one. Year-to-date, we've collected almost four hundred thousand dollars, or eleven percent more than year-to-date, two thousand and twenty-one, which is about forty thousand dollars. So, with that, I will entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it, Shanie.
You're welcome.
Are there any other staff reports or updates? After the big push to get the Public Safety Building through, we're kind of used to seeing updates, and now it's kind of quiet. And I don't mind.
Don't fake it.
I'm getting there. No. Y'all get there. Yeah. Hey, any youth city council comments?
I don't think so. This has been a very interesting meeting, one of the most interesting ones I've been to, so thank you for letting me attend.
Glad you were here. City council comments?
I, go ahead, no. You're at the end of the line.
I just want to ask the question, what, refresh my memory on the resolution from the work session about the golf balls. Were we just going to let staff handle that, or were they going to do and give us a report, or what? I guess somewhere along the line, I kind of lost what transpired from the, what do they call it?
Do you want to handle it, Bill?
Sure.
Yeah, we didn't come to any formal actions during work sessions, so.
Based on the discussion at work session, what I remembered, the kind of just general direction, since we don't make decisions at work session, we just get general direction from council, was to go back and, we talked about different alternatives, what's feasible, what might not be feasible. We talked about liability for the course and the city versus liability of the homeowners around the golf course. And as a staff, we kind of debriefed quickly after the work session, and our plan was to go back and meet with Dawn and Tom at the golf course. Ann and I would sit down with them, and when we go to do the tree plantings, I think Tom, our golf pro, mentioned at the meeting that they would try to plant the trees in groves to kind of provide a buffer and make that a little, little better situation than it is right now with the trees that we had to cut down, because they were diseased and dying. And at this time, we wouldn't pursue the almost four hundred thousand dollar netting, but we would try to resolve the situation with tree plantings in a fashion that would be kind of acceptable to both the homeowners in the area, passersby, and the golf course and city.
Okay, thank you.
But let me know if I, if I took anything.
I think the only other component of that was that we had talked about including the opportunity to do some trees, helping with the trees for homeowners along those stretches as well.
Yeah, and that was the other thing we talked about, was an idea of placing nets in people's yards if they wanted it versus trees and that kind of thing. And we left the meeting thinking that tree plantings would be better for everyone, and we have our tree program where we partner with private citizens already, and so we'd just add those options in via that program.
Question, on the tree plantings, or the trees that are cut down, isn't that, were a member of the Tree City, or what that, and every time a tree cuts down, are there's a replacement of three or four for each one, or something like that?
Two. Yeah, Tree City USA program requires, we have, we have the, we're excited that we're part of the Tree City USA program, and shows that we care about our urban forest, and we're trying to make sure that the health of our trees throughout the community is really of utmost concern to us. We're revamping a tree advisory board right now, and so we'll be asking some people in the community who are experts in those areas to, to help meet the, the needs we have here at the city for long-term planning and related to urban forestry. But there are some requirements to be part of the Tree City USA program. One of those is, it's really an informal guideline, but you try to follow it if you can, and that's anytime the city cuts a tree down in our right-of-way or on a public property, we'll plant two in its place. And we would encourage citizens to do that as well, if they're part of a group and things like that. We partner with the schools to do plantings and those types of things. Another big part of the Tree City USA program is that you have an expenditure of two dollars per capita. And so, we have about twenty thousand residents, so our minimum expenditure related to tree plantings, tree trimming, tree removals, mulching, all those types of things would be about forty thousand dollars, and we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars every year on that. So, we well exceed the budgetary requirement. And then, the other big one is that you have this board in place, which in the past, our Parks Advisory Committee has served in that capacity, and so we'll be replacing that group with a tree-specific advisory board and get some arborists on there and, and representatives from our Parks Division, other city employees, and community members to, to help us with things like street tree inventories, look at all the trees in our rights-of-way on city property, the parks, the golf course, and plan for the replacement of those dying and diseased trees. We've already done a really good job of working with the Youth Conservation Corps to remove invasive species throughout our park system, especially as we acquired more land up and down the river corridor, that was a big concern to us. With all the trails we were putting in, mountain biking, those types of things, we wanted people to not have to go through groves of Russian olive trees and tamarisks and those types of things. So, I think the city's doing a pretty good job, but our next big thing that everyone will hear about is the establishment of this tree advisory board.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It just kind of bring me up to speed, because sometimes I get on the internet and I kind of get lost, and there's stuff I'm still trying to find out about.
Yeah, I get excited about that one. It's really fun, and you get the schools involved. For Arbor Day, we do Earth Week celebration here in our community, and, and try to teach the kids how to transplant in a manner where the tree will actually live, and it's, and then planting the right species of trees is really important here in kind of a drought climate, so, yeah.
It's really fun, because this last Arbor Day, we had Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts come and help us plant trees, and it was really kind of fun, and they had an opportunity to get their feet wet, as it were. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, maybe I should attend some of these things, because I grow bonsai trees, and I don't have real good luck with them.
They would be a little small to block golf balls off the golf course, I think.
Depends on how high you throw them.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, Mr. Reese?
Yes, I'd just like to publicly thank Finance Director Shanie Whittenburg for an excellent presentation on the budget at the open house this afternoon, and to City Manager Bill Bell for a great budget message, and thank you both.
In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.